I call to order the committee to hold for January 22. Welcome everybody here. First order of business, is there anybody to speak in Board, Boyd Forum? Do not have any cards. Okay, Mr. Taylor.
Good deal. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. Mark Taylor, 1111 East Moreno Street. And just wanted to throw out, obviously, you know, we've been talking about the CNPA, and ever since that, I've just been brainstorming about ideas that would draw people to that park to get things paid for. And something that we came up with Saturday afternoon was to try to get a ship down. And started working heavy into it on Sunday. We've launched an effort. We've got probably 1,200, 1,300 petitions so far that have been signed, 500 in the first 24 hours. Lot of momentum moving. But the whole idea is, the cradle of naval aviation should have an air carrier out here. And we have tracked down the forest stall. It's up in Philadelphia right now. There's a real active association with 3,000 members strong that's been working on this for 10 years. They've got plans, schematics, I mean, they've got the whole nine yards. It's about a $30 million project to pull this off. It would be a phased steps kind of thing. People like Nancy Fetterman have contacted us about it. Admiral Booth, a lot of very impressive folks are interested in this project. And the idea is possibly even to build the maritime museum inside the ship. I mean, this ship could accommodate restaurants, housing, I mean, the whole nine yards. We're talking about a serious boat. In front of you, you can see the three different options on layouts of what it might look like. We have an architect that has volunteered his efforts to draw out schematics and elevations so we can get a real good feel of exactly what it is. This is just my little rough work on Google Maps. But you can see there's a few options. We could shoot it straight out into the bay off the end out there, or bring it in, you know, parallel with the end, or bring it in the other side. But just to give you an idea, the USS Lexington, which we lost over 20 years ago, went to Corpus Christi. Since then, it's Corpus' number two attraction. Corpus Christi has become the sixth tourist destination in all of Texas, the sixth location. They, five and a half million visitors fit the Lexington. You break that down to every year, it's about 275,000. Break it down to every day, 800 people a day are visiting that ship. Right now, we have about 30 or 40 that drive across the street over here and run the circle. If you can imagine 800 people flocking to that park every day, buying their T-shirt, their souvenir, their dinner down the street, their lunch, we're talking about huge economic gain. Just the USS Alabama over Mobile, which this totally trumps that, you're looking at, they've estimated they've had 800 million in economic impact over the last 40 years, okay? Break that down, it's $20 million a year, and we're going back 40 years. And you can imagine what inflation's done in the last 40 years. So, we're talking major money. We've got a lot of people behind it. It is a pie in the sky project, I'm not gonna lie, but we're pushing it the best we can. We're researching heavy. 30 million is a lot of money, but if you're looking at 20 million plus every year, just in economic incentives, 30 million looks a whole lot less. The museum has tons of displays and exhibits. They'll fill the thing up. They're on board. We'd love for them to take it over, actually, you know, be the driving force behind it. Don't know that that's gonna happen, but they are on board to loan exhibits, to stock it out, things like that. So, a lot of great activity happening. Just wanted to get it in your ear early on. All this is like 48 hours old, so it's just fresh stuff, lot of unanswered questions to get through. But it's something that would draw people to that park, and we're real excited about the community. The WR ran a thing on it yesterday, over just, I haven't looked at it today, but 1,000 likes on their webpage on Facebook in the first, you know, three or four hours. I mean, it's got serious push, lot of people that would be real interested in seeing the forest stall across the street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
You stole my thunder, because later I was gonna ask the council their disposition, and then from there, hopefully move to maybe for us to vote, but I'm getting ahead of myself. But I appreciate you bringing it to us. My daughter lives in San Diego, and they got the USS Midway. And my wife and I had the opportunity to go on that ship, and it is really, really, really nicely done. So, Councilman Spencer?
Would you like us to comment now, Mr. President?
If you wouldn't mind, if we just go ahead and wait till new business, and then let us bring it up, and then unless you would prefer to speak now, I'll leave it up to you.
No, it all depends on also, I think, what else we have in Boyd Forum.
I believe that's the only speaker we have.
If that's the only speaker, I prefer to go ahead and mention it.
Sure, okay, certainly, certainly.
Thank you. Yes, I am aware that this is very fresh, and was asked to explore the website. And fellow councilmen there most especially will appreciate the, my question is, location, location, location regarding any sort of amenity, certainly one of this scale in our city. I invite you to immediately shift from exploring this in site plan and do your evaluations in section to scale. The waterline to flight deck height is approximately, what, 80 feet? So, that's an eight-story building. So, that's what the public that probably is so excited about this doesn't quite recognize...
Councilman Spencer?
Yes.
If you would permit me, and then I'm gonna ask for guidance to the council. I believe it is appropriate to have the discussion, but I don't know if it's appropriate to have it during Boyd Forum.
No problem.
Boyd Forum, I believe, is basically for people to spend about a minute or so to bring a concern to us.
Well, that's why I...
But we will broach the sub-ueclator, and I don't want to cut you off. What I'm saying is, if I could get you to bring it up at a later time, it would be more perfect.
I was just getting to the crescendo, I'll save.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. That's the only agenda, person that I see speaking in Board Forum now. We're to appointments, Community Maritime Park Associate, Board Trustees. And as I see the item, recommendation, City Council point, one individual to fill the unexpired term of Dick Baker, ending October 30 of 2013, and one individual to fill the unexpired term of Councilmember Sherri Myers, ending October 30 of 2014.
We have two nominees, just two, for each position. And I make a motion to approve by acclamation. Second.
Okay, it's moved to second, any discussion among council? Any discussion, audience? Yes, council?
I just wanted to say that this got all jumbled last time, and I think that the reasons for that Councilman Johnson asked to table it originally, I think those are still valid reasons.
Yes.
And I think that we should have at a soon council meeting, a discussion of whether we need to change the size, or, you know, or even encourage the CNPA Board to ask, or to give us ideas on how they would like to see that board reconstituted, if at all, because, you know, if they're feeling that people are participating, then that's great. But if they feel it's unwieldy, then we need to know that. And so, I'll support this today, and we then need to keep that thought alive and get that going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Would you like to address or mention, or what you had said earlier, or just let it go at this stage?
I'll just mention it briefly. I think, you know, President Wu and I had a brief conversation this afternoon about this, and I'm not rendering a dispositive legal opinion, but the way I read the CNPA bylaws, it's incumbent upon this City Council to appoint and nominate members, but according to their bylaws, it's incumbent upon the CNPA to determine the number of members. So, I think when President Wu and I spoke, I wanted to make sure that we had a clear understanding that at this point in time, without doing any further research, I don't think that, you know, council can demand that the membership be added or subtracted from. We can certainly ask. And as I reviewed the past couple of years of appointments and items, I believe it's been the protocol of this council to recommend, not to demand, to the CNPA, that membership be changed. The only specific detail I could find is that the bylaws say that membership cannot dip below seven.
Okay, with that, any, yes, council?
I just wanted to say that I do agree with Mr. Messer. The way I read the bylaws, we do not have the authority to dictate to them the size of their board, and also, as far as I can tell, we have the authority to appoint members, but I don't find any authority to remove members. I mean, so I think it's up to the CNPA if they feel like they want to reduce the size of their board.
Yes, councilman?
The way I understand it, that's still another vacancy that hasn't been filled since Councilman Pratt resigned.
That is correct.
So, we should have another opportunity to nominate another person.
That's correct. And in that regard, her comments are exactly spot on, and I thank her for them. Very, very, very valuable comments. Thank you, councilman.
I think the motion we're considering is just to approve the two nominees, which means the discussion we're having is not really germane to the motion.
Okay, well, so in that case, any other discussion among council? Any discussion among audience? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passage and amiss. Thank you. Okay, second order of business is resolution in support of Senate House Bill 13 and Senate Bill, State House Bill 13, Senate Bill 52 regarding use of wireless communication devices while driving.
Move the approval?
Second.
Move to second. All right, any discussion? Yes, councilman?
This is kind of my thing. Originally, I wanted to have us do an ordinance. Upon further research, it was discovered that there's a preemption in state law that will not allow us to do that. So, at the recommendation of others, and in talking to Mr. Reynolds about this, I decided resolution would be the way to go. There are two bills currently out there. There's a House bill and a Senate bill. They are identical. They don't go as far as I'd like to go, because if you're concerned, it makes it a secondary offense, not a primary offense. So, if these laws pass, you can't be pulled over for using, texting and driving. It would have to be something that you're pulled over for something else, then they discover it. So, it goes part of the way, not as far as I'd like to. I understand why they preempted it, having read the, there was an Attorney General opinion that was issued to the city of Parkland, Florida, who has an ordinance on the books that they cannot enforce, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me to have an ordinance that you can't enforce, but they do have one, and it states the preemption is valid. So, I would ask for your support today so that we can send a message to legislature that this is a good idea for the state of Florida.
Very good. Yes, councilman?
I'm just gonna ask a question, and I hope Mr. Bear can clarify, and if not, that's fine. I just am curious, you know, okay, so it's a secondary violation, right? So, okay, so you get in a wreck, and can the policeman take your phone and say, "Well, look, a text was sent within minutes of when this wreck happened." Can you get in trouble for that? Or did you get that from this, or do you know?
Well, Councilman Pratt, the, it goes so far in the law, or in this proposed law, to say that you can get copies of the records, the, you know, the cellphone records. So, I don't know exactly what the timing is on it, but they can go as far as going back into the billing records of the cellphone company to establish whether there was a texting violation going on at that time.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody in the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passage and amiss.
So, Mr. President, I'd like to vote against it at this time.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, and four, and one, one against. And Councilman Johnson absent. Okay, that then moves us to Mayor Communications in action. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. The subject is voluntary annexation of properties. The recommendation is that City Council approve the annexation of 10 parcels which currently lie outside the city limits.
Move the approval?
Second.
Okay, discussion among council? Discussion, audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passage and amiss.
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would like to vote against that also.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. President, we are currently going to pull item number four off the agenda, and we'll be moving to item number five, which is sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at the Bayview Senior Citizens Center. The recommendation is that City Council approve the ordinance authorizing the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at Bayview Senior Center under specific terms and conditions.
Move the approval?
Second.
Okay, any discussion among council? Yes, Councilman Myers?
I'll probably support this Thursday night, but I'm not going to vote in favor of it today.
Okay. Anybody else on council? Yes, councilman?
Just, I have a question. I was approached by a few citizens, and, you know, the issue of why we are doing this at this time, have we missed out on some significant revenue possibilities because we can't serve alcohol in that facility?
Yes, councilman, that is correct. And also, we've been, and more than that, we have other avenues and venues that are available, and this one clearly was one that was not, and there were specific requests to open that up. But the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in council? Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh. We gave you your chance this time.
Okay. I didn't forget. Okay, Mr. Reynolds?
That's all for Mayor's Communication in Action, Mr. President.
Okay, under Attorney Communication Actions, I see none. Then discussion items, annual report on 311. Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bear had requested us to bring forward for a discussion with council, essentially a little bit of background on our 311. Excuse me, my mind feels like it has a pillow wrapped around it at the moment. I'm recovering from the flu. But also, but the history of 311, and also some changes that we have in place for the future. And so, we prepared a package of information that went out with the package that outlined specifically not only what we started initially, but some of the concerns that we found as we sought to initially implement the system, which led us into finding a new software that's gonna allow us to expand our reach even more with 311, specifically from an administrative standpoint, to be able to actually target and track specific calls that come in, and specifically a timeline of what happens with those. And from a bigger picture, as we look at that, as we look at starting to try to track those kinds of things, which we haven't done in the past in the city, is then will allow us to better allocate our resources internally from administrative perspective. So, I'm certainly here to answer any questions in specific. Derek Cossen is also here, who spearheaded the initial work on it, and we also can talk a little bit about some of the new technology that we have as well.
Okay, yes, councilman?
Will 311 be able to tell me, for example, if I called up and said the number of 311 calls from District 7?
Yes.
So, it can do that now?
Not currently, ma'am, no.
Not currently, okay.
And that was one of the, one of the concerns, and I believe it was Councilman Spencer specifically who was really looking to address those code enforcement issues in his district. But we can, we can track it, all of those, and eventually, code enforcement, the concept is ultimately to have this plugged into our GIS, where any, any of you can sit down, open up a screen, and determine exactly what's happening from in your district in regard to police calls, to 311 calls, to any type of, any type of other services that the cities are doing. Now, granted, that's a long-term look, but that's our ultimate goal and objective.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
I had looked at systems like Point Point, and one of the things that I thought was neat with some systems was a citizen, so I find a pothole, I report it, and somehow there's a way on website where I can see, the pothole's been reported by every citizen of this city or not, and where it is. Is there a way for them, for citizens who call in and say, "There's a pothole," to see where it is in the process, or, you know, "Oh, Public Works has acknowledged it's a pothole," and then we expect to fill it next week, or something like that?
Yes, ma'am, and Mr. Cossen can give you a little more detail specifically on the program.
Okay, so, not right now. And sort of to Councilman Canada Wins' question, you know, right now, the current platform we use has an address component. It's not directly tied into any mapping system. So, we could create any geographic-based report, whether it's by council district or the city overall, but it's labor-intensive, because it basically requires us taking the address off of each of those tickets and putting them in and overlaying them. So, this new platform will automate all of that. You, or a user, or anyone, you know, will be able to visit the cities through one site and see a live map essentially of all open or passed tickets on a map. You'll be able to click, you know, each one. It'll tell you the details of the ticket, you know, as well as, you know, if it's a passed one, you know, when it was resolved. On a more granular basis, we'll be able to do that individually with each council member. We'll be able to send you, you know, requests either on, or reports either on demand or on some periodic, you know, once a week, once a month, you know, detailing just your district, or even just, you know, a defined area within your district.
Thank you.
Yes, councilman?
I request, thank you, Mr. President. I requested this item just because I needed some information. I thought the public could benefit from it as well. And looking at the current system, I think, you know, obviously, you've addressed a lot of the issues we have currently. I think it's very important, I like one of the, well, I like several of the new ideas, and one of those is that someone in the field can enter a request also, like an employee. I think the goal of 311 needs to be not only access, giving people access to their government, but also some transparency, and also some trackability, that we're able to track where these things are in the system. You know, we, as council members and as staff, we all get requests from citizens about various things, and I think if they all went into 311, we'd have a better ability to track where they are, you know? And I have had no issues, you know, every time I've needed something or requested something from staff, I've been able to get it settled relatively quickly. My one concern is about the numbers that were not settled within a, you know, we still have a few outstanding, I guess, it's only like 8% or something, and then some that take longer. Are they generally more difficult issues to deal with? Or is it, I mean, I would think like a pothole would be fairly easy to address, but...
Yeah, yeah, and that accounts for most of the percentage that's resolved quickly. What I did in preparing this report is did a manual review of a number of the outstanding issues, and a number of those were as simple as, you know, the end staff member had not gone back and closed that out. You know, so that's a retraining issue, and that's something we'll do as we, as we implement the new platform. You know, others are more complicated. There are, you know, visibility issues that involve, you know, other agencies, you know, right, state right-of-way in some cases, so, you know, they involve, you know, getting in contact with other agencies. So, that's some of the longer ones.
Okay, one more thing.
Sure.
And I've asked for input from people, and really, I haven't heard a lot. A lot of people that I've spoken to have not used it, not had a need to. But the one person I did speak to who'd used it said that the city staff were, came across and kept following up, and were very responsive, and they're very pleased with the response they got. Now, theirs was a sanitation issue, had to do with a pickup of some bulky items or something, and it was very quick. And, you know, that's the kind of thing I know I want to see, and I like the idea that we're gonna be able to track it now as council members. Obviously, I don't have one district out of the whole city, but it'd be nice to be able to see if a citizen says, "Hey, I went into 311 and put in something about this pothole," and just to go and verify that it actually made it in there, you know? Not to cross-check what our citizens are doing, but just to see if it actually was entered in the right place. And so, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think 311 can be a very vibrant system for our city. It can really help us as council members and as the executive branch to make sure citizens' needs are met. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I have used 311, and I frequently use it for reporting things in my neighborhood. We have quite a few foreclosed houses and basically abandoned. And I will say that it has been very effective, and it appears that code enforcement gets the information, they get right out there and give a citation. The only thing is, I'm just looking at it now as a citizen, since it impacts my neighborhood, and I'm calling, for me, as a property owner in my neighborhood, is that nobody gets back with me and says, "Okay, you know, we have, we're addressing your issue." I'll have to call and say, you know, "Did y'all get that 311 call?" You know? But, I mean, sometimes I can see that they've gotten the call, because they're, they've either cleared the right-of-way, or they've put a code enforcement sign in front of a piece of property. But what would really be nice is if we had some type of online tracking system, like where a citizen could just go online and see what's been done with their complaint and kind of track it. So, that would be highly beneficial.
Yes, ma'am, and you're exactly right, and that was one of the, one of the issues that we identified relatively quickly, is needing to try to find a way to close the loop on. And, you know, from a staff perspective, the man-hours it would take to do that, to manually enter into that kind of information, was looking to be a little oppressive. But luckily, this particular system that was located seems to be able to do that automatically, and you really should see that ability to log right in and see exactly what the current status of whatever claim, or whatever issue is at that point.
I'm looking forward to that.
Yes, councilman?
I appreciate our newest council member, one of our newest council members, Councilman Bear, wanting to learn more about how this new system was going to operate. I think it shows a level of willingness to be, wanting to be immediately responsive and accountable to the citizens. What's great about this is, I want to point out a difference in what I think this provides. Most importantly, all of our citizens become watchdogs and caretakers and stewards of the city, particularly our infrastructure. But, for instance, just three years ago, or four years ago, prior to me being involved on council, I did a survey of downtown lighting that was inoperable, and I contacted Al Garza to ask why this was happening. And his response was, "Well, we wait on citizens to tell us what's not working." Well, that was cumbersome for those citizens to do that, so I invited him to spend an evening with me, and I would drive him around, because I felt like that was much more effective. Wasn't able to ever arrange that meeting, as hard as I tried. But this, I think, is a quantum leap ahead of where we were. I'm very excited about it, and I want to thank staff for looking at other systems, particularly, I have checked this Philadelphia system. It is amongst the best in the country, the model.
And, okay, is that, yes, council? I believe it was, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead. Okay.
I just have one more question. Does 311 get a lot of calls? I mean, I get potholes and stuff, but do they get calls from people saying, "I'd like to get my street repaved"? I mean, just because, obviously, that would be a really long lead-time item for that to happen, so is it an open call for three years until it happens? Or is there like a limit to when? Or does staff say, "Well, that actually goes through this different department, so you need to, you know, it's not really a 311 issue." How does that work?
Yeah, they have gotten some of that. More, you know, potholes are certainly, potholes are the single most common item, but they're certainly a lot more common than, you know, my entire block or street needs to be repaved. We do get a decent number of sidewalk, you know, either repavings or repairs. Something, something like that, we would not typically open a work order for in the current system. That would be referred to staff to discuss the grading system we use, and, you know, let the citizen know about that process.
That's good. Just wanted to make sure that you didn't have items from like, on there for years and years.
Yeah, we typically only are opening actual work orders right now on issues that require action.
Thank you, councilman.
I wanted to ask about the promotion of this.
Yes.
Do you have anything planned in the future to get more information out to the people? And I would like to get a mail out to the people in District 5 about this system, so more people will be aware of it.
Yes, sir. And that, you know, even with the successes we have had, you know, we still, you know, just about every town hall that the mayor has, you know, he asks, you know, "How many people have heard of 311?" And, you know, we're typically, you know, 25 or 30% And, you know, we're typically, you know, 25 or 30% of the people raising their hands. You know, we obviously want that to be, you know, 100%. So, you know, the promotional efforts we did last year, you know, they worked, I mean, they did increase the traffic to the system, but it's still not where we want it to be. So, you know, obviously, the challenge there is cost, you know, and doing that in a cost-effective way. You know, the ads that we did, for example, in newspapers, you know, while those were effective, did raise traffic, you know, we were also, you know, there was a cost that we were, we were paying that didn't, you know, that went to county residents, for example, because, you know, county residents read the paper. So, one of the things that, you know, that we might want to look at is direct mail, you know, where we do target, you know, just city residents via direct mail piece, you know? Now, that is a cost, you know, that we have to look at, but, you know, it's certainly something we can consider.
Well, if the people don't know about the system, you know, they're not going to use it, so...
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the last, the last several months, you know, we focused on low-cost options. You know, we've added the 3-1-1 verbiage to the back of all city business cards so that if, you know, you're interacting with a city official and they give that to you, you have that, you know, to the signature on all email lines so that if, you know, city staff or emails you, you have that information. You know, so the cost is the main issue there, and, you know, direct mail is, you know, for those of you who run a campaign, is not inexpensive, you know? So it's an option. We've got to look at it from a money point of view.
Okay, Councilman.
Mr. Cosson, what's the projected date of the new system going online with the changes?
Right now, we are looking at a mid-March release. You know, we are, we are sent, we're essentially ready to go with their product. The legwork that's outstanding at this point is integrating it with our current work order system and GIS platform.
Okay. And I, one more comment, Mr. President. I think that'd be an ideal time to promote it, if we could target that, because all the changes, the mobile app and everything, are really going to make it a lot more significant, I think, the changes.
Okay, certainly. Ms. Taylor, if I can just get one thing, oh, Councilwoman.
Oh, go ahead. I'll...
Okay, Ms. Taylor, go ahead.
Just make a quick suggestion on the marketing of this. It seems like it'd be a perfect fit for the city trashcan magnet. I run a home inspection business, we're in hundreds of homes every week, and you'd be surprised how many of those magnets are on people's refrigerators. So either double the size of that or do a separate magnet with some other, you know, likely information, and they do stick around, those magnets. So just a thought.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilwoman.
I was just wondering, in terms of getting the word out, is through neighborhood associations, and I'm going to be going to my neighborhood association next week. Do you have extra copies of this I can pass out?
Yeah, I can absolutely provide you any copies, and I myself am more than willing, if any of you have neighborhood association meetings that you attend, I'm happy to come and speak to the issue or answer any questions that residents may have.
Okay, great. And also, we have new business cards, and it's on the back of your business card, by the way, the 3-1-1. But I think also getting out, a possibility of getting out a mailer in our gas and electric bills, have, we've done that before, haven't we?
We did do one in, I want to say, late 2011 or early 2012. You know, the challenge there, again, is that, yeah, our Pensacola Energy customers also include county residents, so when we do an insert like that, I mean, it's possible to target, you know, to target just city residents, but the cost then of breaking it out, you know, basically, you know, negates the benefits. So, you know, again, with that, we're, again, reaching, you know, non-county residents that, you know, we don't want to confuse and them thinking that they can use it also.
Right.
Okay, before I call the next council member, I again implore you all to please self-monitor. Okay, Councilman?
Number two.
No, I...
I think that the awareness campaign is paramount, because even when the initial version of 3-1-1 was introduced, I was amazed at the number of people that I considered very well-informed, curious, and those that stayed current, that just didn't know about it. I'd be walking with them, and they'd point out a problem, and then I would show them by example. And always, I encourage all council members to not identify ourselves as anything but just a citizen, calling in, by the way. But they still didn't know. So here's one of my thoughts, is we've got all of these people, these merchants, that are constantly involved in transactions with our citizens, with Pensacola customers, many of them members of the chamber. Certainly, there can be some sort of soundbite that could be developed that allows those people invites. I don't know if it's some sort of reward system, if there's random checking at a seven, at a convenience store or whatever, where that merchant can say, do you live in the city? Do you know about our 3-1-1 service? Just something that is different than the printed material that often gets tossed and costs money. Then we're really creating a buzz and using the human resources that are there and involved in day-to-day transactions, from McDonald's to locally-owned businesses. So I, and partnering with the chamber, because what it makes is a better community.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes.
Just one, this is only my second time. I just wanted to say that there were comments about not confusing the county people, but many county people, I know so many people who live north of Nine Mile who are sure there's the residents of the city, and I'm like, okay, no, have you seen your property bill? You don't pay in us anything, you're not resident. But for the truth is, if they see a pothole while they're driving through the city, we want them to call. And so, I mean, I think it's not, it's not a bad idea to tell people, any old people that, you know, we, this is what you call, and if they live in the county, we just, you know, and they say, oh, there's a pothole on Nine Mile, we say, sorry, stinks for you. But, I mean, it would be nice if the county could consider doing 3-1-1 too, but that's their decision. Anyway, I just, I think it's not, it's not a bad idea to just let all people walking around know.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else want to counsel, anybody in the audience? One last comment. I want to commend the administration for putting the system in. As Councilman Spencer so eloquently stated, there's a long bit of need, and Councilman Bear, I believe, addressed it as well. There's only one request that I've made to the system, and I know you all are still going through the, you know, getting it together, but as soon as possible, if a system can be developed, that whenever a request comes in, that whatever district representative be notified as soon as possible. And of course, in Councilwoman Pratt and Councilman Bear, anything that comes in, they should be aware of, because it puts us in an awkward position over in the grocery store and somebody says, well, have you taken care of X and Y? And I'm not looking for anything detailed, but a simply forwarding of the original email the council member then could go on their own and monitor on their own, but if we get a notification, I think that would be very helpful to us.
Yes, sir.
So, and with that, thank you very much for your fine work. Okay, moving on, consent agenda items, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry. Item number one, okay? Is that the only one?
With the approval.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Or do we do a consent agenda if we, whatever?
Number one.
Nope, item number one.
Has to be a distinction.
Yes. Okay, that then moves the information items, which is now council communication and new business. Now, Councilman Spencer.
Under council communication, right now, what I would like to do, Mr. President, is offer fellow council members to activate, I want to provide them with a link, a web link, that will provide more information about bike programs, some bike sharing programs, and I think that will certainly be of interest whether or not you were on the Complete Streets Committee. So I want to use this opportunity in open forum to make that announcement and suggest that I allow the clerk to distribute those links to all council members, therefore abiding by the sunshine law. But using the clerk's office as the portal and then the distribution source. So that's under new business, I mean, excuse me, council communications, and of course, I have new business when you want to allow me to discuss that.
Please.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that, I understand the sunshine, but since we have a, we have our administrator, could not things be, go through that person, or does it still has to go through the clerk's office in order not to violate the sunshine?
That's a good question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to sort of move us along, it could go through either way.
All right, then, fine, thank you.
I recommended Councilmember Spencer that he do this because he'd made a request of me to forward something on. When we have our rules and procedures workshop, I will be recommending that we do it through the clerk's office, simply because whenever you're disseminating information, in my opinion, it just makes it a little cleaner. If you're going to be disseminating information to other council members that may come up for a vote at some point in time, we're making it public here. I took this example from something Councilmember Pratt did when she went to Boston for the conference. She used council communication to say, I went to this conference, I've learned some things I think would be valuable for the rest of you, I want to share it with you. She disseminated to the clerk, who disseminated to the rest of you. That way, if anyone wants to make a public records request, it's right at their hands. It doesn't look like it's something that's just in between council and council staff. So, of course, we could do it either way. I'm just trying to make it as, make it best for public records and best for the sunshine, in my opinion.
Okay, Councilwoman.
Well, I think we need to discuss this in our rules and procedure committee, but I think that if the communication is not appropriate, it doesn't matter who sends it out. You can send information out for information only with no response, and so I'm really kind of confused about what you're saying, so maybe we should have a meeting so you can explain to me what you're saying. But if you're sending information out that is not appropriate under the sunshine, it doesn't matter who sends it out. If the information is for informational, information only, and council doesn't respond, and they're not having a communication, I don't think it matters who sends it out. But anyway, I'll get together with you about it, and maybe you can explain it to me further, what you're talking about.
Before I go to Councilman Spencer, and I'm just throwing this out as a thought, Councilwoman, would you have any objection if the clerk did it till we had our rules and procedures workshop, at which point we, as a body, then make a decision how we would like to move in the future?
No, sir, that's fine with me. I was just making a point that...
No, I understand.
That legally, I don't think it matters.
And I want you to be happy with what I'm suggesting.
But that's fine with me. It doesn't matter to me.
And I say it only in the spirit of moving things along until we do have it, so, yes, Councilman.
So I can get those links out, right? Those links will be provided.
Unless I hear any objection from...
Right, and I think, what I appreciate, the discussion providing is our input, and in this case, I want us to err on the side of prevent, diminishing the chance for an erroneous, whether it be, I mean, an innocent error, but by not sending directly from council member to another council member, we've at least prevented that chance, not entirely, but it sure helps. There's, I, sometimes I'm answering 150 emails a day, and it's sometimes just rote to press reply, and unknowingly, I may be replying, I just enjoy that safe, I'll call it a safeguard.
And we can discuss that.
A procedural safeguard.
And we can discuss all that when we have our rules and procedures. And, you know, I don't think, I'm not wed to anything, is, but I'd like us to be able to operate to that time, and I think Councilwoman Myers, so she's okay with that. Is there anybody else, Ms. Reynolds?
Not on that topic, sir.
Oh, you just made four, okay. Okay. Any other council communication and/or new business? Yes, Councilman?
Just going to follow up, since Councilman Spencer mentioned bike sharing, to let you know that we will be doing Complete Streets this Friday. We had given time for Public Works to look at it, and then, of course, the Public Works guy who was doing it is now not there, but he, I think he got everything sort of in line, but we will be meeting Friday morning, so I don't know what you guys know about that meeting being scheduled, but I need to get the agenda together, and we'll get it to you guys. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Yes, I want to bring up a new business issue that I appreciate Councilman Spencer bringing up earlier, and that's the issue of adequate lighting, especially in our highly urbanized areas. I have neighborhoods, streets in my district, that, for instance, Sanders Street only has one light on it, street light, and it's at the end of the street, and so consequently, the street is very dark, the same way on Joy Street, it's just one block. And residents are having to pay to put streetlights on their streets, and, you know, we've told people, one of the advantages of annexing into the city is that we provide street lighting. And the most worrisome area in our city is the intersection of Ninth Avenue and Airport and Brent. If you drive over there, you will find that there are no streetlights along Ninth Avenue, and those two intersections are very dark because there's no lights there. The military has complained about it, and as a consequence, ECAT had to readjust one of their bus routes so that young men and women did not have to cross Brent Lane to get to the rave theater or in the Mella Mushroom because there's not adequate street lighting. And you would think that all of our intersections where people have to cross the street would be well-lit at night, especially in our commercial areas. One of the problems we have, I suppose, at least in, along Ninth Avenue and that commercial area, has to do with who's in charge of the streets and the right-aways, but it affects our businesses and our citizens and our visitors who come there to do business with us. I would like, at some point, for the council to consider a streetlight policy so that we will have consistent street lighting in neighborhoods and in commercial areas, so that we just don't have some street lighting here and some there, and it's just a hodgepodge, no rhyme or reason. So I just wanted to throw that out for a possible discussion at some point of developing a policy regarding street lighting. And I haven't done any research on it, perhaps Councilman Spencer knows a lot more about it than I do, since he's a planner, but I just wanted to throw that out, that I think we need some consistent policies when it comes to street lighting.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman. Okay.
Ready for me? All right, thanks. I am going to follow up on the USS Forestal commentary. I was just describing the vertical scale of this ambitious project as being just 80 feet from waterline to the flight deck only, not including any of the other superstructure. But most importantly, I think everyone needs to understand that scale, because the site plan just doesn't communicate it, or the aerials. And I do see, and I don't know, Mr. President, if these are Mark's comments... Mr. President, if these are Mark's comments about the preference for, for site plans, and indicates that they are. And he, he even points out that, for instance, option number two definitely would change the, the name of the southwest corner, which is now Sunset Plaza. And if you haven't stood up against a gray steel building facade 80 feet tall, it's, it's impressive, and maybe some other synonyms could be used. The other challenge that I know that a project like this will begin to uncover as the analysis matures, is something that we faced, or I did as a committee member, as we were looking at birthing, birthing other large vessels, and that being exactly what is necessary to secure it for the inevitable category three and above hurricane. And because if not properly done, needless to say, third base will be drastically reconfigured if this moves landward. So, anyway, I feel like at this time, there are so many items, Mr. President, that have not been vetted, that it's premature for the council to take any formal action.
Okay. Let me throw something out, which you're entirely free to dispose of. Would you be agreeable to at least have the mayor's office explore the pros and cons of moving ahead? And I would have no problem with several council members as well that would like to serve in, with that, you being one. And I don't know of anybody else on the council that would like to serve on that. I don't think we're at the stage of saying yes or no. But what we need to do is have a complete review of this. I think it will come to the council eventually, whether we should do it or not. So I believe that we need to be involved, but I believe the mayor's office probably needs to be involved as well. And if we could get a group of composing of both administration and council members to look at both the pros and cons and bring those back to us. So I'm not advocating for or against, but if you feel so disposed, if I could get a motion, then we could.
Yeah, I've definitely learned it's better to be involved in, at the front end of where a helicopter should go, as opposed to trying to relocate it.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that a committee report to the, be formed to report to the mayor's office.
Or work with?
Work with the mayor's office to explore the pros and cons, feasibility of this particular proposal.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I will second it for discussion.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, I would just second it for discussion. But I have a comment here.
Sure.
The, before, I think before the mayor and the council, you said, of course, America can do whatever he wants. He doesn't have to be directed by us when he sees a great opportunity for the city of Pensacola. But for the council, I think that the, first of all, the organization itself, that is going to be responsible, and the focal point of this needs to be identified, exactly who they are. Who are the responsible people? What organization this is, you know, and all of that, before we consider anything. And have a better presentation to us, other than a verbal presentation to us about things. I mean, because these people who've been working on this for 10 years, they have some of the data that we're looking for in reference to planning and, and all of that. You know, I was upset when the, when the Lexington left. I was in chase with the Lexington, "Don't leave, don't leave, please don't leave us." But it did. This could be an opportunity. The organization itself should be the focal point. We should know who they are before the city council becomes the responsible party for getting this done. So all of the players need to be identified as we go along. The other thing, before we even do anything, is to determine ownership of the Forstal. I mean, we need to know who own it. There are other cities probably out there, probably want to be discouraging, but I think the organization itself, the one that's starting this and the ones that's getting the momentum, need to do a little bit more.
And help me out, Mr. Baer. I believe the only thing that's on the table is for us to look into the pros and cons. Now, before we get to that point, the items you're mentioning, I think they're very appropriate, but I think they're ahead of where we need to be. I may be wrong, but that's how I see it.
I disagree. I think they've not brought us enough. I think that they're not, they have not brought us enough to do this. Right. We haven't answered a vote, but I'm just saying that I just think before we go and jump off on, even before we set a committee up to determine that, that certain questions needed to be asked are answered. So.
Okay. And your points, well taken. Thank you, Vice President. All right. Anybody else? Councilman Baer, and I'll just go right down.
Yeah, it is an interesting situation when the person that seconds it for discussion then lobbies against it. It's lawful. I mean, I'm not saying it's not, but, you know, clearly the CNPA needs to be involved in this decision, because it is a, it's going to be abutting their property, if not attached to their property somehow. There's got to be some way for you to get on the ship, and it's probably going to be from the CNPA. It will affect their future. So I think they need to be involved, for sure. I just think we're way out front here, further than we need to be, and I will not be supporting this motion today.
And that's what you were saying. Yes.
And I also am hesitant to support, I think forming a committee starts getting everything really mixed up. I think that it makes sense for, you know, this group to call the mayor, welcome to, to talk to us.
Right.
We can start a dialogue that's a more informal dialogue that, that'll start us getting towards getting the right information, so we could make a decision. But I think a committee doesn't, we don't need to be that formal at this point. It's a more exploratory.
Okay.
Yes, I will not be supporting the motion either, because I don't think it's the proper avenue. I do believe that the CNPA is the proper board for this to, to go before, because, you know, they're already looking at streams of revenue for the, for the maritime park.
Right.
The mayor has hired Randy Oliver, who's still doing his research on what possible streams of revenue could be generated at the park. So clearly, this appears to me to, and it says in here, it, it has something to do with the maritime park.
Right.
And we have the community, the CNPA, and they have a contract with the city to have festivals and events there that generate revenue. So I don't think there's any point in us setting up a committee. I think it would just muddy the waters. I think we've got the CNPA, and that's where it needs to go.
Okay. Before I call on Councilman Wingate, that's the beauty of having a motion and then discussing it, because now we have the feel of how the group would like to go. Had we not had a motion and discussion, then we wouldn't know. Evidently, you carry, does the, Councilman Wingate?
I just wanted definite, not to walk out of here in the newsroom, have another story of the Forstal that's coming here with.
I wonder if they've considered any other location. If we had kept the Lexington, it wouldn't have been in this area. It would have had to been someplace else.
Okay. With that.
I think now, this is officially my first withdrawal of a motion.
Thank you very much, councilman. And, and, you know, the only reason that I thought at least we'd take a look at it, was I thought the criticism has been is that we, as a legislative body, have not been proactive. And so here's a chance to at least be proactive, and then, you know, on something that was very large. But that's okay. With that, the discussion's over with that. Mr. Taylor, I'm not going to call on you, because we've already withdrawn the motion. Any other business come before the body?
Mr. President, if I may, I just wanted to let council know that the mayor will be bringing forth his pick for the restore committee for Thursday night for a vote from council, and that is Mr. David Penzone, which I know that you are all familiar with.
Okay.
That's all, sir.
All right. Yes, Mr. Green. Ms. Gray, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Excuse me, Ms. Gray. I did not see the vice president's hand until you stood up.
Okay, I just wanted to know also, is it appropriate now for, for us to send our ideas to the mayor about the Restore Act, or do we have to wait for the committee?
No, ma'am. As I said, I believe it was during our last committee, the whole meeting, any and all ideas are welcome. We're continuing to put together a list, and my, my goal is to bring that forward to this body ASAP. And any ideas are welcome, please.
Ms. Gray?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to extend an invitation personally to all you folks to something that's going to happen in better than an hour right now at Pensacola's Fish House, the deck. At 5:30 to 6:00 p.m., actually, we pushed our forum back, because we thought you guys might go long, but it looks like that was a little overreaction on my part. But at 5:30 to 6:00 p.m., we're going to have a meet and greet with Pensacola Young Professionals. We're also going to have the Pensacola, I'm sorry, Propeller Club and Port of Pensacola's Users Association and Seville Rotary there for a meet and greet for half an hour. At 6:00 p.m., we're going to start our forum, which is the Pensacola Young Professionals Top 10 from the URAC report. We've, we've highlighted 10 products that we think were fantastic from this report, but we're going to let our membership vote and, and chime in on what the top three are. And those top three out of these 10, you're going to see, well, a lot more of us on those topics, because we're going to heavily advocate and use whatever tools we have to push those projects forward. In other words, our organization is not satisfied with letting another great plan sit on the shelf. So we wanted to absolutely invite all of you down. I would have made a county meeting, there's not a county meeting today, so I'm inviting you folks here today. Please come to the deck on the Fish House and join us. And I think we wrap up at 7:30, so you'll be back in time for your favorite programs on TV. Okay, thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. And with that, we're.